Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the meeting of the Board of Trustees in Inova Vista, Colorado. We're meeting at the Community Center and some people are also on Zoom. Today is the 22nd of November of 2022, and we do have a quorum. So we will begin the meeting. Would you do a roll call, please?
Trustee Cobb.
Here.
Trustee Hilton Hinga.
Here.
Trustee Decretzi.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
Trustee Swisher.
Here.
And Jenkins is absent.
Very good. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Canada, the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. People who are at the meeting and those who have downloaded the packet have in front of them an agenda. Would any changes that anyone needs to make to the agenda? If there are none, then I would entertain a motion to pass the agenda.
We'll make a motion to pass the agenda.
Second. So we have Decretzi, Cobb, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. And then we have the consent agenda, which consists of some commission minutes from planning and zoning, as well as minutes from the Tree Advisory Board, the Town Clerk Report, the Recreation Supervisor Report. And the Tree Board, the Tree Advisory Board, is reappointing members of Tom Liverman and Dan Murray, and also appointing Allison Hopkins as regular voting members. And we appreciate all the hard work that those people put in. And then there's also, item E is the adoption of a public improvement agreement with a new proposed development. That's included in the consent agenda unless anyone feels that it should be pulled out into a business item.
I actually have a question about that. Generally, just, I was trying to figure out exactly where that was. So I was more curious about location. And I know we slimmed pickings tonight on who was here. And so I was, but I was, I was curious. I just wanted to kind of know a little bit better.
It's on the east side of the railroad track, and it's really actually about even with Crosman Boulevard. And it's north, yes, north.
North of.
Yeah. Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
So it's been a proposal for quite a while. It changed hands midway through. And now it looks like it's ready to begin doing some early surveys.
Okay. I was just trying to get my mind around where it was. And that's where it's like, oh, you know, or something sometimes it's tricky to visualize and such, but that's fine. So with the Crosman, I think I have an idea for what you're talking about.
If you have any specific questions, Joseph is on.
I think that that was helpful. Just your little.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as drafted?
I so move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? So we have Cobb and Hilton Hinga. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So now we have an opportunity for people to make public comments. There is no one here in person tonight, but are there any on Zoom, Lisa, that people have raised their hand or anybody who's called in?
No, ma'am, I'm not seeing anything.
Okay, great. So we'll move on from that. And then we have staff reports. The first of them is from the Town Treasurer, Philip, who is, I think, connected by Zoom.
Yep. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Loud and clear.
Great. Well, my report is on page 224 of your packet, I believe, which is kind of crazy. But I won't take too long here, but you'll see that September sales tax came in over budget, which is, which is good news. And you can see all the statistics there related to how that compares to September of last year and how that looks for us year to date. Also, kind of the split between local and, and remote sales tax is in there as well. Yeah, we're kind of in the busy, it seems like it's always a busy season, right? But especially in finance and administration, it's a busy time of year because we're getting into the employee reviews, performance reviews, wrapping up budget, you know, doing a lot of stuff like that. Benefit selection for next year, which did definitely wanted to recognize Jana Schuman and Becky Schmitz on my team for doing a fantastic job, kind of setting us up, you know, getting through all that stuff at the end of the year here. So that's, that's what we're focused on. We got a few things coming up in, in December. We, we have the DOLA grant presentation, December 6th. We are, the closing on the old, the old or the current police station, our Town Hall East property is now scheduled for December 9th. And we're also closing on the water loan December 13th. So a good bit still to go for this year. With that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thanks, Philip, and thanks to Jana and Becky for pitching in. Any questions for vote? Thank you. Get some rest, feel better. Okay. Now we have Joseph's. Is he on Zoom also?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, Trustees. Thank you all for having patience with, with me. And I wanted to start out and apologize for the overload of planning and zoning commission minutes in your packet. It was a breakdown, breakdown in communication internally that made those not get to you on a regular basis. So we're addressing that and I hope to have those two as we go forward in a more consistent fashion. So thank you for that understanding. The, my report for you is on page 228. We're starting on page 228 of your packet. And there are only actually two things I wanted to call your attention to. The first one of which is highlighted there on 228. It's a recent request, an application from a variety of different property owners in the Colorado Center PUD for a rezoning. As you all might know, the Colorado Center PUD is located over near our airport, and it holds a variety of different properties, including long established properties, as well as newly established properties like the Fading West Factory. This, this PUD was established way back in 2005 by Ron Southard, who just recently passed away. There's a variety of property owners, actually the vast majority of property owners that would like to move away from the PUD and towards light industrial zoning. So I just wanted to highlight that as a forthcoming topic that if we do move forward with this whole application, and I should say that staff is very supportive of this. The PUD is, is very complicated and doesn't really result in anything different than what we might find in the light industrial zoning anyway. So you might see this before you in the form of a public hearing in the first quarter of next year. So I wanted to call your attention to that. I'm happy to answer any questions related to that. And then if we skip down to page 231, I really am looking for a bit of a head nod from you all. At our last meeting, when we talked about the comp plan, or sorry, the water, water ordinance, we had insinuated or sort of shown a timeline that might have had a public hearing before you for the code change, the ordinance related to those, the policy before you on December 13th. And as I started drafting this policy, based in your direction from that work session and in conversation with other staff and with Lisa, it, it felt very, very important that this, the gravity of this policy allocating water to different types of development really warrants more public input and a little bit slower of a timeline to allow for that. And so I wanted to bring this to your attention. I included the draft policy in your packet. My intention is not necessarily to discuss the policy itself. If you'd like to give me direction on anything therein, I'm happy to hear it. But really, I'm looking for maybe a head nod to proceed with a timeline that I mentioned, which is essentially opening, publishing this draft policy and publishing that ordinance that you all have tomorrow, and holding that open for the rest of the year for public comment. Then in January, compiling that public comment together with any changes that might seem appropriate to the draft ordinance and policy and bringing them back before you, potentially as soon as January 24th, that would definitely be my goal. If something large comes up, maybe big changes or something like that, we may prefer to have a work session on the 24th and then look at February 14th for the actual public hearing. So I wanted to raise that topic with you and see if that's something you're willing to, to pursue.
Trustees, have any comments?
I, I have, Joseph, I actually had a few questions about this, but I feel like some of them are things I could, I might, I should probably just speak with you about. They're not really significant. I mean, some are significant, some aren't, but they could come up at a later time. Does that make sense? I, I mean, even if you.
I leave that totally up to you, Trustee Cobb. If you, if you would like to talk about them now, that's, that's fine. If you'd like to talk offline, I'm happy to, or we can also arrange a different business item or work session as may be appropriate.
Okay. I'm just trying to think what's in the best interest of everyone's time, but why don't we see what other comments people have? And then maybe I will go into a couple of my questions.
Well, and I think it's important for the public to recognize that, that this is a policy change and that they should pay attention to it and go ahead and give us their feedback as well. Because we definitely want to hear from, from the developers and, and from just individuals. Peter?
Oh man. My, one question I have, and we discussed this a little bit during the previous work session is if we are extending a timeline, all this, which I totally get, you know, open up to more public comment and get a better read on it because it is a fairly significant policy change and adjustment for the town in a very important area. But if we are extending the timeline, does that butt up against other developments that are kind of coming down the pike in terms of, you know, I think the Boulders was one that we mentioned during the work session of we're already getting pretty close. And so if we extend that timeline, does that lower the amount available and all that stuff? Just like, how does this play into kind of the overall picture of kind of the developments that are further down the pipeline than others?
Yeah, it's a, it's a great question. So a couple of things. First, just a reminder that this will come back before you in the form of a public hearing for your consideration. By no means would it be forced to make a vote and a decision in that public hearing as currently contemplated on January 24th. So, so you'll have much more opportunity to discuss the nuances within this, as well as the resulting public comment from, from this timeline put forth. To your question, I would, I would say that the Boulders is, is the only, the only project of any size that has the possibility of receiving administrative approval. Remember, the, the Boulders is, is has applied for final plat, which is an administrative approval. So they, they may indeed achieve administrative approval prior to the timeline in which this ordinance would actually take effect. So if you do consider this on January 24th and you approve an ordinance, that would actually go into effect more like February 24th. So there is a possibility that, that the Boulders could be approved. If that were to happen, we would be bringing or including in that staff report for administrative approval, staff recommended allocation of SFEs, as if the policy were in place to make sure that should, should that happen, should this policy get approved, we actually have a framework already in place to, to do the math for the various buckets that, that might apply to that subdivision, if that makes sense. Any other subdivisions that we've, we've discussed recently, like Homestead or The Crossing, even Carbonette Street, those, none of those would achieve approvals or even really come before you in public hearing for consideration prior to the timeline we suggest here.
I have a thought. I think, I mean, I'm all for getting it out to the public so they can take a chance to get it because that's, I want the community's input. The only thing I was wondering about is like, I love how there's definitions under everything and so it gives the people, the public can understand of what it means. The only thing I was thinking maybe to remove, because I'm curious about what the public says versus showing them the allocated SFEs. Like, we know, for instance, carbonites, I think we've already established that that is a go. But for the other things, I think they're all kind of in flux in my understanding as they're just, you know, that, you know, draft, right? So we're not sure how many in each bucket. So I would actually say, take those away and just see how the public, see what they think. So I don't want them to be swayed by the, you know, the numbers that are there, if they're not solid numbers. I'm more curious to see what they'd say without being kind of led into like, well, this is what this is here already. It's what we're thinking. I would want more of a, like a super flatline basis of like, I don't know, just to really see where their heads are at and then kind of utilize that to help guide some of these numbers, which I think the numbers are totally a great start, but I don't know. I don't want to lead the public in any which way. I want them to kind of, what are their, their thoughts with having no knowledge of where we might want to put the numbers? Just based off of the understandings that you've, you've done a great job for the definitions and such. That's my only, only thought. And feel free to negate that if you guys don't like it, but just my two cents, but I think it's great. And the sooner the better, in my opinion.
I think the one thing to remember with this is that it's very important that we allocate all of the, all of the water potential. Because otherwise there's that taking. So we kind of talked about that last time. So that's just a reminder on that, but so.
Yeah. And I, like, I know we'll have to allocate all of it, but I guess I kind of don't want the public to see what we're already thinking in terms of buckets. I just want to see, like.
For instance.
Projects. Yeah. Well, I mean, like infill, infill economic development, you know, public nonprofit, like, I really love to see the input from the community. How many people are like, we want it all in public nonprofit? Like, I want to, I want to see how that waits, like, how many people speak to each bucket or where the public really thinks. That's all I mean. It's just more of a general idea of where they see the importance of the SFEs going without having numbers there. Because I think that kind of is like, oh, I want, you know, if I was somebody that didn't really understand much of this and looked at it and be like, okay, well, it looks like they're already going to maybe give 30 SFEs to the public nonprofit institutional facilities. It might sway my generalized thoughts on like a pure thought basis versus. Does that make sense? You guys follow a little bit?
Yeah, it makes sense to me. And I think you're, you're definitely right in the sense that some of these numbers, definitely not all of them, but some of them do kind of tip the hat to the importance we're placing on that category. I'm, I'm happy to delete that column altogether, but when it goes out to the public. And then I think that the task before staff, before it comes back to you all in January would be to try to balance public input and public desires with actual data and reality. For instance, the public might say, we care about schools 100% and all of them should be allocated to schools. Well, we have methods from right water engineers to calculate how much a school facility would actually need, which is kind of how we got to the number that's there now. So I do want to sort of acknowledge that public perception of need would not necessarily properly or appropriately translate into higher number of SFEs or lower number of SFEs. So just to kind of give you a glimpse of how I might incorporate that feedback into a final policy draft.
And that, and that makes total sense. I know town staff and our consultants, they have a better understanding of all this than probably the general person. They don't sit through all this, but it's just that kind of curiosity baseline, what, you know, what does the public think? But I do, I 100% agree. There has to be total balance and it can't be just one way or the other. So I, I agree with, with what you're saying.
Yeah, that's great. And I think the way, you know, I'm envisioning public input or public comment being in the form of a survey. And, and so there will be both open ended text questions and fields that folks can just offer their opinions, but also sort of ranking questions in this, in the context of this policy where we can see how folks would place these various categories in relation to each other and obviously offer other categories that we may not have thought of. So I think all that will be really valuable for you all to, to wrestle with.
Cindy, do you have anything you'd like to add? You have to unmute yourself if you do.
Yep. So just go down to the bottom and click on the mute.
I got it. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Loud and clear.
Um, I, I really like Gina's recommendation on when we give that to the public to let them fill in the boxes without having the numbers out at the side that we have out at the side to see if there really is a difference. But I really like what Joseph came up with for this draft, and I think you did a good job, Joseph.
Thank you very much.
That's it.
Okay, thanks, Cindy. Devin, what about you? Do you have any comments?
Yeah, I'm in favor of moving forward with the draft to the public. You know, as I guess if the public wants to fill in different percentages, I guess they could, but you know, I think in the general scheme of things, you know, we had to make sure that we're keeping things important like affordable housing and infill and things like that. So I don't want people to get hurt if all of a sudden we're not doing 100% schools or, or whatever. But you know, these are things that we can always iron out later. So yeah, move forward and looks awesome, Joseph.
Thanks, Devin. I'd like for the trustees in particular to look at at the top of page 229, which is the request from Joseph that we fill out the survey for the comprehensive plan. Our ideas on that. And I think the deadline is tomorrow. Is that right, Joseph?
I mean, that's, that's the original deadline I put on this. I, I have no intention of closing the survey electronically. So if you all need a few more days, please feel free to, to take that.
Right. Libby, I would like to go back and ask a few of the questions I had for the allocation policy. All right. Joseph, a few questions. And first of all, I found this really, really helpful and pretty amazing that you put all that together after our discussion after the last, last meeting. One thing I wanted to ask is, how, how would this apply to mixed use developments?
Yeah. So the, the intention about how this would be applied to any project, and this could be a building permit or could be a change of use, or it could be site plan subdivision, whatever the, the development review is, is that the, the SFE category would align to that specific unit and specific use of water. So to the extent that we're able, right? So in the case of a mixed use building, let's just take a recent example of the CKS building that's going to be built next to Legacy Bank. That has a retail space and three residential units. And so in that building's case, I would imagine we would have taken the equivalent of one SFE for the commercial space, or maybe slightly less than that, given that it was retail and those use less water. And then the appropriate number of SFE for those three residential units from the residential bucket, whether that be the general bucket or whether they might be making certain commitments that might make them fall into the multifamily bucket or, or the affordable housing bucket. That specific case obviously would come all out of the infill category in this case, but I think that hopefully answers your question that we would, we would try to carve up each development into the appropriate categories to honor what they're actually doing.
It does answer my question. Thanks. I'm just wondering if we need to, if it's, if we, anybody thinks we need to spell that out in, in this document.
It's a great concept and I'm happy to, to add, I've got a running red line version that I have in the background. So I'm happy to add that as a, as a potential commenter or possibility for inclusion in the final draft.
Okay, thank you. And just a couple of others. The, when the, the trigger that speaks to the completion and adoption of a new long range plan, I mean, could that, is it possible that if, if we adopt a comp plan this year, that could trigger a whole review of this?
Absolutely. And, and I think, you know, the intention would be that it's not an automatic, like you have to review it if we adopt a new long range plan, but that it gives you the opener. And obviously you have the opener as, as the board any, anytime, but it kind of gives you the opportunity explicitly to say, is this long range plan projecting a vision different enough from these established categories that warrant a review and an update or amendment to this?
Okay. All right. Thanks. And then let's see. I, I'm pretty sure, I mean, I feel sure that we asked you to include something like this, but I'm not sure I now understand what we meant. And that is the second to the last bullet. Can you help me with a scenario in which there would be like a new town controlled funding source that would provide a subsidy in one of the categories?
Yeah. And, and it's definitely a theoretical, but I think it's worthy of consideration. And Philip might have to help me here, but essentially this is just an, a broad category that would say if we create a new fee or pass a new tax on anything, that would create a dedicated fund for, or that might pertain to development in any of these specific categories, that that might warrant the opening of a, of a review of this policy. And my thinking there specifically is affordable housing. And I don't know under which circumstances we would create an autonomous fund for affordable housing. But if we do, we could then start to change the definitions that I had drafted there to reach lower on the AMI chart if we're also offering subsidy. I drafted those definitions the way I did because we're not offering subsidy. We're not offering dollars into these developments. But that's, that's the intent behind that bullet, if that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. And then this is kind of a, maybe as much a question for trustees as anyone else, but there's the item that says annually at a meeting of the Board of Trustees would be in March would be a trigger. And I know we all did discuss that. But as I think about that, and I was in favor but as I think about it, it kind of is at cross purposes with the triggers. I mean, unless we, I guess, I mean, it seems like the triggers, what would, what would prompt that besides a, a trigger? What sort of review? Or would it be something that triggers didn't, we didn't anticipate with the triggers? Just.
Or we could just say we're reviewing it and we're not making any changes.
Yeah, right. A simple check in, just as a mandatory something. I don't know if it needs to be a trigger, but just something that's penciled in as a due diligence.
And I think our goal to that was just to say, we want the sitting Board of Trustees to make, to have the chance to look at it every March before a new set of trustees come in every second April.
Right. I do remember that now. Okay. Right. I do remember that now. Okay. That's all I had. Thank you for the time.
Other, other questions or comments?
Um, I have a question about that survey. I guess it got lost in my emails, but I found it. And then I clicked on the link and it says I have to sign in. And, uh, I don't know what the sign is, is for the internal survey.
I'll, I'll email you separately, Devin.
Cool. Thanks.
Yep.
Yeah, I'll try to get that done by tomorrow for you.
Great. Well, thanks, everybody.
I have a, yeah, we're counting on the survey for this, um, for the water. I mean, I just, I could be wrong. My previous experience in other cities and towns is whenever we open things up for public comment on an issue such as this, it's largely developers who are going to be commenting on it um, in all public hearings. And so when we really want to hear the, hear back, want to really hear feedback from the public. It will be outweighed often by the developer's side in perspective, which I think will really play into everything outside of general development to a certain extent. But, so I think if we do have this survey or once we have this survey ready and it's public, just I think it's kind of on us and others to try to get the word out, to try to get as much feedback as possible so that we can have a better balance of feedback on this. Otherwise I do think it'll be pretty lopsided in terms of view of what the public thinks. Just a personal thought and I could be wrong on that, but that's in my experience.
That's great. I'll definitely take that into account when I do the outreach. And I guess I will say that, um, the target audience explicitly is probably contractors, builders, developers. Since this policy affects them in ways that are more acute than, um, say a community member that already owns a home here. Um, who would not be affected in any way by this other than the tangential effect. So not, I, I do want to try to get a broad input on this. But I also think the, the most helpful feedback on the impact to our town's development will come from developers and builders.
Yeah, I think it's a value of voice and not to discount it. But, you know, since we were talking earlier about everybody wanting to just go to schools or something like that. That I don't think is exactly the feedback we'll be receiving. And so if it is the general public that we're looking for, that we'll need to cast a wire in that.
Yeah.
Thanks for all your work on this, Joseph. Thank you.
Thank you all.
So I think we're ready to go now to Jack Wiles.
Yep, Airport, Jack.
We're zooming in to the airport.
Yep. We've got your report up. So if you can unmute.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Um, so my report is on, um, uh, two, 237. And I've got a sec here. All right. Um, so we're at minimum staffing this week. Everybody's pretty much on holidays over here at the airport. And, um, we had our last border air advisory board meeting, uh, last Tuesday. So our next one will be in the new year, uh, on the 10th, January 10th. Um, I know Paula sent out just, uh, for folks during the advisory boards for renewal. They will address that in the new year. But just to tell you that the folks that were coming due in 2022 will, uh, stay on the advisory board. So our air advisory board will look the same next year as it is this year. Uh, we have a meeting coming up in December 5th with Dibble FAA to discuss the contracting and construction work for the upcoming project in 2023. So that we'll, we'll discuss, um, when they'll put out to bid for the projects that are becoming up. Uh, just operation wise, everything's pretty much slowed down. Uh, we'll get a little bump here over Thanksgiving. And then once the snow hits the mountains and ski season, we should pick up a little bit more. But we're pretty much in our slow season now, which is kind of good. We can catch up on paperwork and maintenance. Uh, just for finance, for Philip, you can pretty much say our last fuel order, we just got on 20th October. That'll be it for the end of, for this year. So that makes eight loads, pretty much a record we've had. Our fuel prices, I think we'll lock them in till the end of the year to it. Uh, you can see on our report. Uh, we'll keep them up until we'll see how fuel prices, if they come down at all in the new year. November 3rd, we had the, uh, Governor Polis drop by for a quick visit. So it turned out, um, short nose, but we had quite a good turnout. Obviously it worked. Uh, he got reelected. So I, I guess that had a lot to do with all our BV folks. I can see that. Other than that, you can see the, um, the tables we have here and our jet traffic over the year has been up. And our fuel, jet fuel has significantly increased from the previous years and both last year and the year before that. So you can have a look at that. Um, that's basically all we have right now. If you have any questions. That's all I have.
Any questions for Jack? Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much and all of you as well.
Thank you. Thanks, Jack. So now I'll move to the business items. Uh, thanks for all the good discussion on the, on the water allocation. That was, you know, very, very worthwhile. Um, so the first business item has to do with fee waivers and fee reduction policies. And do we have Leslie here or do we have Shane? Okay, so take it away.
I think Leslie was going to start it off, but I'd be here for questions as well.
Leslie, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great. Hey, thanks for having me. Um, I believe the fee waiver and fee reduction policy proposals are on, uh, pages 241 and 242. And to be very brief, um, I, I think the big, the big changes made if you've looked at the current policy that we have, um, is that we have a fee waiver and a fee reduction policy um, listed in the same policy currently. And so what we've done is we've just broken that out into two policies to make it easier to understand. The first policy on 241 is a fee waiver policy. And that is the four organizations slash events that you as a board of trustees, um, or a previous board has approved to be, um, organizations that get completely free events, um, in our public facilities. And so the first one is us, the local government entities in Chase County. Um, the second is the Buna Vista School District, which we of course do a lot of swapping and trading for free space, um, with them. The third is a volunteer income tax assistance, um, work sessions that they do at the community center. And so they do not pay for those rentals. And the last is the BV Strong Dinner Event, which is an event that has been deemed in the past as an event that is truly free and open to the whole public. Um, so rather than have those four listed kind of in an odd space on the, on another policy. We just broke that out and said these four, um, events or organizations are, um, they still need to go through the special event polit, or application process. Um, when they are doing a special event because we need to know about it and we need to be able to have support staff and all of that. Um, but they are free from and waived from all fees. And then the second policy on 242 is as we've looked at, um, the reduction policy, it had what we deem to be some kind of confusing language. Um, in just how, where you would apply the different, you know, this nonprofit organization. Does it fall under? Is this free? Is it open to the public? Does it have all these different things? And so when we looked at it, we just ran some numbers and actually figured out that it would still be a, quite a benefit to the nonprofits in our county if we simply made the reduction policy be that they get 50% off all facility rentals anytime they rent a facility or have a special event where they rent a facility. And, um, and then we raised that minimum fee on this proposal. Or sorry, the maximum amount waived per year used to be $500. And on this proposal, we've raised it to $1,000. And so a, um, a nonprofit in our county, if they have, um, that status, they get 50% off any facility rental, be it for a special meeting, for anytime they're in a, in a facility that's owned by the town or for a special event up to $1,000 per year. And then they'll pay full price after that. Um, so that is, is the proposal. And Shane, if there's anything, um, as you're looking at that, that, um, I've missed, feel free to jump in.
Now, the, the biggest reason it's going to change is it, you know, um, you know, Ben, Ben was great at thinking up a policy. He wasn't great at writing it out. So it was just very unclear, um, the way it was previously written. We're not, um, other than, you know, only saying that we're going to waive facility fees rather than, um, facility and special event fees. Um, it's pretty much the same as the new po, as the old, as the current policy that's in place. Just a few minor changes to make it easier to apply, easier to understand, um, and easier to read.
Everybody have any questions for Leslie or Shane about this or, or any proposed changes to it?
Thank you for that.
Okay, um, I think that this is one where we are.
We're at that point.
Yes, our, our request is a motion to approve both the fee waiver policy and the fee reduction policy, since we are separating both of those out.
Okay, so, so I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the proposed fee waiver policy and also a, and also the, uh, fee reduction policy.
Second. So we've got Lucrezzy Cobb. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. Thanks, Leslie. Thank you, Shane. I think you're still on the hook though, because
For a while.
Now we're going to do the number of attendees attending events that require a special event permit. Please go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I think 243 and 244 are, um, that code changes the memo. Um, and then the actual change, um, oh no, 244 and 245, sorry, is where that starts. Um, and really, if, if Jeff needs to step in on the actual language that he's working on here. Um, the, the overall intent that we're bringing is simply changing. Currently our code reads that 200 people on public property constitute a special event. And what we've, um, dealt with a few times over the past year is realizing that an event of 100 or above, um, so 100 to 200 really has the same effect on our town staff and our town facilities, um, as an event of 200. And so, um, folks might have 150 people at an event and they are able to bypass our process. And, um, that's not good for anybody because we don't know the details of the event. We don't know how we can support the event best. And it's not good because, um, we still have to put town staff resources into those events. And we have to know about them. We have to try to figure all of that out. And so, um, we really love for them to be able to go through the process, um, so that we can have the security around that of knowing we're supporting the event well from our town staff side and knowing, um, what's happening in all of our facilities and knowing details about that. And then specifically that we ask all special events to get additionally insured, to have the town be additionally insured on their event insurance. And so there, we don't want there to be somebody who has 170 people on a town property, um, having an event. And we aren't covered under, um, those, it, under all the ways that we could be. So really we're just trying to capture, um, those events that still have the same effect on us as an event of 200. Um, but currently aren't being captured as a special event. And that's the main intention behind. And then there's some additional language changed, um, that, that Jeff, if you'd like to speak to that, I'll let you.
Yeah, thanks so much. Yeah, sorry. I didn't get a chance to, um, um, look at this. I, it was given to me, but I, I just didn't get to it before it went in the packet. So my apologies. I have like just two kind of minor suggested revisions, um, to the version of the ordinance in your packet. Um, it looks like if you go and look at the definition of special event, uh, it currently reads a special event means an organized procession or assemblage requiring exclusive use of all or a portion of a public right of way, a public park, a public recreation area or other, or other town facility. Those are pretty much defined above in this ordinance. And so those are all included in the definition of public property. So my suggestion would be to just, just to clean it up a little bit, say, a special event means an organized procession or assemblage requiring exclusive use of all or a portion of any public property. And then it's, and it would say, and which meets any one of the following criteria. Just no, no reason to repeat those various areas because it's meant to apply to all public property. That was the first one. And then the only, only other one is real minor is most of our clients are trying to have gender, gender neutral references in their code versus his or her. So the definition of town administrator, my suggestion was just to change, um, the definition to town administrator means the town administrator of the town of Buna Vista or the town administrators designate me. Super minor, I, I just, that's what everybody's doing for all of our codes. And so I just, whenever we have a, a new ordinance, I figure we'll just sort of try and keep it that way.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, Roland, did you get those two changes? Okay?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there, uh, any, anybody ready to make a motion?
I just want to fair problem thing. So just make sure I understand this is only for towns property or public property. It's not for a private business. So if a private business wants to hold some event in their facility that can hold more than 100 people, do they have to, okay, just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thank you.
So we have no motion on the table yet.
I move, uh, to adopt, uh, ordinance number 32, amending sections 11 dash 111 and 11 dash 122 of the Buna Vista Municipal Code Regarding Special Events.
Second.
And does it need to say as amended or is it, oh, those are already in this?
Then your packet, uh, is not amended, but we did receive the clean version. So if you could say as amended.
So is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. So we have Cobb Lucrezzy.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the amended ordinance passes. Thank you. Um, okay, now, we're still in the recreation department. Now we're on item C for both town weekends. Please take it away.
This one is, is very simple. Um, we, there had been conversations since long before I was in this role um, of trying to make sure that we create some space before it gets filled up. Um, for locals to enjoy our public spaces in the summer. And one of the ways we want to do that is to, um, have three weekends. And we've looked at our, our calendar so far and these weekends are the least, um, intrusive weekends as of now in the summer. Um, and so the proposal is to declare the last full weekend of June, July and August every year as events that will not have, will not permit any special events on town property. And so, um, currently we're not displacing any special events. Um, and so the, we felt like these are great weekends. We're not trying to come in and say no more special events, you know, in the middle of, on Labor Day weekend or anything like that. We're just saying, um, three weekends. So for Friday, Saturday and Sunday, the last four weekends of those three months, um, we're going to give our public spaces a bit of a break. We're going to give our locals a bit of a break and maybe the opportunity to use those spaces more. Um, and in a lot of ways, we're going to give our town staff Um, and in a lot of ways, we're gonna give our town staff a break from supporting special events so consistently throughout the summer.
Comment there.
Okay, I just wanna say, I think this is awesome and I'm stoked to see you guys do this. And I think the people, the town will be. Super excited for the fact that they, they have a couple of weekends that they can enjoy their home and, and also for all the work you guys do. I know you're inundated with a ton. And so, you know, for you guys to have at least a few, few down weeks for yourselves. I think, well, the town in general, for all the town stuff that puts their time and energy into that is, is definitely needed. But I, I lo- I love seeing this. When I read this, I was, I was excited for it and the people of this town. So that's one thing I hear is, man, we never get to go downtown. There's always something. So I think this is special for everybody and I, kudos to you guys for putting this together.
I, I concur with Gina. I really, I really like this idea. Um, and I also just, in the short time I've been on the board, it's been through at least one summer. And I've just seen, you know, just the, I mean, the numbers and the toll it seems to take on law enforcement and overtime there. Public works and recreation and town administration, and I'm sure others I'm, I'm not thinking of at the moment. So I really do like this idea. I mean, I'm also sort of sense that, that even some of the businesses in town that are overwhelmed would appreciate this. But, but did we check with any of them or? Did we get feedback anywhere there?
When we were taking this idea around, you know, we, I did look really closely at August, um, because we had like. Um, three weekends, two that had like huge special events with um, Gold Rush Days. And then I think it was the second weekend had like. Re, they had four, had four events. Uh, so we had two really heavy um, events weekends and then a weekend after that, the fourth weekend, actually, that basically had no events. Town was still just as busy. Um, it, it kinda seems like, I mean, it's just anecdotal um evidence, but it kinda seems like. In, in the summer, we're gonna be busy kind of regardless of what's go- what's going on. Um, to the point where Main Street's full up and you can't find a parking space and all that kinda stuff. But um, you know, at, at least giving a. The intent is to at least give a little bit of a break toward other facilities.
Good. Okay, great. Thank you.
So with this being a policy change, um, can it be made with um, a motion and a second and a vote? Without it having been written up?
At least so.
Okay. Is there someone who would like to make a motion to pass?
Correct, Jeff. Correct me if I'm wrong.
No, no, I just couldn't get my, couldn't find my mute button there for a second. Yeah, no, you're, you're totally fine. Motion, second and a vote as amended.
Okay. Great.
Okay, I'll make a motion to um. I don't even know how you'd phrase this. What's that?
To approve the policy, I guess.
Make a motion to approve the policy that there will be no special events on the last weekend of. I'm sorry, the last week of um, June, July, and August.
Those four weekends.
Last four weekends.
Is there a second?
Second.
Peter? So we have Lucrezzy and Hilton Hanga. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Thank you. Now we have the. Two thousand twenty-three fee schedule.
Yes.
And um, this, uh, you should have all the red lines in your packet. Most of those have to do with planning department, airport, a little bit of water, um, I see some recreation. And so I just opened it up for you to tell us if there's anything that you see that you need questions for. We have all of those department heads online um, to answer any questions you might have about those.
And Lisa, if I may, we bring this, we bring this forward and draft um, in a draft phase, uh, our draft. Version at this meeting so that we can take any input the board may have. And, and make any changes for the December thirteenth meeting when, when it'll actually be adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I, I don't have any objections or any, any substantive comments, but I, um, I wish I could say, say I read every word, line by line, word by word. But I, I actually read most of it. And one thing that just tripped me up was on page two sixty-three at the bottom. Under water rights dedication. I just think there's a typo. It just says uh trustees may receive. And I think. It may be required or not sure what that word would be, but, but trustees may receive a water rights dedication.
Oh, sure.
So it's, it's not substantive, but it might be something you wanna correct.
If I might just um, throw in there real quick, I, I think that is actually not a typo.
Oh.
In, in this case, it, the code contemplates two ways developers can satisfy water dedication. One is by actually dedicating water rights to our portfolio. The other is by paying a fee in lieu. So I think in, in that particular sentence, it's, it's contemplating that we receive a water rights dedication.
Okay. Okay, just that we would receive that on behalf of the town?
Yep.
Got it. Okay. Sorry.
No, you're good. Thank you.
So if we had no changes in this, could we adopt it tonight?
I don't know. Philip, uh, what are your thoughts on that?
You cer- you certainly could. Um, I think it's probably. It's already in the agenda for next meeting. So I don't think there's any harm in accepting it tonight. The board can change the fee. Um, the fee schedule at any time. Um, so. I'll let you all decide if you wanna do it either way.
Item is not limited to just consider, just discussing it tonight. I mean, you, you have the ability to actually approve it if you want to.
Motion for approval.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve it?
How about the people online? Yeah, it's like, Dan and Cindy, what do you think?
Give it a moment, but.
And if nobody wants to make a motion, it just won't stay the way it is.
Right, might give you all a little more time to.
Yeah. Traditionally, we've just approved it with a budget, correct? It doesn't really, just takes five seconds. I guess it doesn't really matter if we do it now or then.
They can um, have a little longer to look at it. Okay, thank you. Um, so now we have. I will open a public hearing.
Oh, Cindy, did you have something to say?
Sorry, Cindy.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll put my mute back on.
Well, that's okay.
So this will be a public hearing um, for the two thousand twenty-three town of Unavista budget. And I open the hearing at this point. Six fifty-seven. So um, Philip, I think. Let's just go to you.
It does. Yeah. Um, so page two sixty-five is my memo summarizing where we're at. The great news is we have a balanced budget.
Okay.
Um, as drafted. Um, and so I, I kinda go through explaining how we achieved that. Um, so I'll just highlight a few of those, those uh, changes that were made. Since our last meeting. Um, so we, with the September sales tax coming in a little bit higher. That has increased our revenues for two thousand twenty-three. Um, in addition to that, we are, with that, we increased the transfer from the general fund to the capital improvement fund to five hundred and thirty thousand. Um. We then utilized more transfer from the conservation trust fund. Uh, that's now at sixty-six thousand to the capital improvement fund. And we also um, are proposing to transfer fifty-five thousand five hundred from, from the marijuana special revenue fund. Uh, and fifty thousand from the street fund to go towards our capital projects. Um, you can see on page two sixty-eight. Um, kinda that summary of our general fund, our, our, our capital improvement fund. Uh, list of projects there. So you can kinda see uh, where the funding sources are coming from and how those total out. And we're now at five hundred and thirty thousand coming from a transfer from the general fund. So. Um, so that's good news. Uh, as proposed, the budget is balanced. And I think in pretty good shape. Um, I updated the uh, fund projection, fund balance projection. Twenty twenty-three on page two sixty-nine. So you can see where, where theoretically we would end up at the end of, of two thousand twenty-three in terms of fund balances. Um, you know, at the current, with the current budget um, that you see in the packet. So uh, what I would, would ask from the board um, is, is for one, any questions, clarifying questions. Um, and two, any additional changes you would like to see? Um, so that we can package everything up and be ready for approval uh, on December thirteenth.
Philip, um, on that um, projection of the fund balances as of the end of two thousand twenty-three.
Yes.
Wonder if you could label that page. Um, better, cuz it, it doesn't jump out at me that it is a projection of the end of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
Oh, I see. It is at the top there, in that little box at the top.
Yep.
Okay, never mind.
It's just kinda small. I'm trying to blow it up a bit on the screen for you.
Looks, looks like you've done a masterful job with the budget.
Yeah, really great work, Philip.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, I'll open this up to uh, the public. If there are any comments from the public, um, we're open for discussion at this point. Hearing none, all closed. Public comment. And then um. I think we need a motion to um, forward this um, to continue this budget meeting to the December thirteenth. Two thousand twenty-two meeting.
I'll make that motion.
Hey, Cindy, thank you. All right, is there a second?
Second.
So we got Swisher Cobb. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes and the hearing is closed.
The hearings continue just for the.
The hearing has continued to December thirteenth. Thank you, Jeff.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, so we have reached trustee interaction. Um, Cindy, would you start, please? Do you have anything you'd like to bring up?
Um, happy Thanksgiving. I hope you all are able to enjoy time with your families over the holidays and. That most of us are well enough to get together. Yeah. Um, work wise, I really don't have anything to add.
Okay, thank you. Devin?
No, just happy Thanksgiving. Uh, hopefully everyone has a good time with their family as well. I'm. Here in New Hampshire, my mom is very happy that I'm home, so.
Oh, great.
Nice.
Yeah.
I had the pleasure of seeing Devin in a orchestral concert the other night. It's great.
Oh, yeah. Thanks so much for c- coming, Libby. It was great to have you there.
Very good. The Alpine Orchestra. Okay, um, Peter?
Are you all right, dude?
Again, Cindy, if you want.
Uh, no, I can't think of anything too much. It's just such a weird feeling meeting, I guess. Quick. Nobody's here. But, yeah.
So? Nope. Nothing from, from me. Okay, just happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Um, I'll be getting together with um, the historic preservation committee, but um, I received a notice a couple of days ago. Saying that the courthouse has been nominated um, as a building that should be on the National Register of Historic Places. So um, hopefully at our next meeting, we'll have a letter, a letter of support for that nomination.
Just a, a quick response to that, Mayor. Um, that is an exciting nomination and I would just say I doubt we'll have that to you December thirteenth. But we may have, we would have that to you ju- January tenth.
Oh, great. Okay. Uh, you're talking about the letter.
Yeah, you all, you all will need to review and, and sort of issue an agreement with the commission's uh, determination that the nomination is, is correct.
Good. Thanks, Joseph. Gina?
Not really anything. Just, everybody have a great holiday. Happy Thanksgiving. Way to go. Small team tonight on. Right, through this.
Yeah. So Gina's gonna be filling in as the mayor. Uh, she's the mayor pro temp. So she'll be running the next meeting. As I will be out um, for that meeting.
Bring a joke.
So um, is there any other business? Anything more from recreation? Last chance.
Yeah.
The work on the Whipple Trail has been completed for the fall.
Looks good.
Yeah.
Looks really great.
I can go walk it. It's, you know, completely different trail.
Yep.
Um, and then they'll come back and finish up in the spring. Um, limited with weather, um, then, things like that. Um, we got some money from the county going forward. Um. We, they dedicated a little bit of extra funds for us to finish off the pickleball. Um, seventy-five hundred to finish off the pickleball parking lot. And then they committed fifty-one thousand to Billy Cordova Memorial Park in two thousand twenty-three. So.
It's great.
We're getting a, a pretty good fun, uh, yeah, fun together for, to use for a grant match, so.
That's great. People are very excited about that park. Is there, you and Jaren? Is there a motion?
Bush, Peter.
Peter? And Cobb. Hilton Hanga and Cobb. All in favor? Any opposed? Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy guys.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good night, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
All right, get it.
I don't think we've ever done this. Seven oh seven.